Commissioner Mahoney, would you lead us in the invocation, please?
All your heads with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for this time that we have come together. Lord, we ask that you would be with us while we conduct the business of Jackson County. Lord, help us to make decisions that will be best for generations to come. We ask that you would bless our troops that protect us near and far. Be with them and their families. Now, Lord, we want to give you all the thanks and all the praise for all that you do. Lord, I want to remember bereaved families tonight, too, that you would be with them and take them through difficult times. We ask these things in your Son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Eli and Gavin Lightner, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of America, the Republic of America, the United States of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Chair, Commissioner Lightner.
Here.
Commissioner Lachka.
Here.
Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Commissioner Duckham.
Here.
Commissioner Alexander.
Present.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Here.
Commissioner Plachek.
Here.
Commissioner Elwell.
Here.
Chairman Chatwell.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. At this time, we have awards and recognition. Excuse me. Approval of the agenda, please.
Some support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Mahoney, support from Commissioner Plachek. Any deletions or additions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Awards and recognition, Department on Aging Resolution honoring Cheryl Jones as Senior Volunteer of the Year. I have a motion and support. Is Ms. Jones here? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. This time, we've arrived at communications and petitions. If anyone has any communications or petitions, please bring them at this time.
Please, Lord, this is a summary of a conversation I had with Jill Haygood, who is the administrator for the Aragami Waste Recycling.
Motion to receive?
Support. We have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We now have a special order of a public hearing based on the strategic plan of the county. At this time, the public could step forward and comment on the strategic plan only. There'll be further down in the agenda an opportunity for general public comment. Any public comment on the strategic plan? Seeing none, close the public comment on the public hearing on the strategic plan and move to the 2014 budget adoption. This is a public comment and an opportunity for the public to speak to the 2014 budget adoption. Again, there'll be later time for general public comment.
John Wilson, County of Jackson resident. First, I'd just like to commend the commission and administration on the balancing of the proposed 2014 budget. Although nowhere in the budget can I find anything that deals with the Calhoun County, Jackson County sharing agreement. It was publicly stated by one commissioner last week during a radio interview that there will be a $300,000 gain realized by Jackson County. If that is the case, shouldn't that be somewhere in the budget? Or is just that number just being taken out of thin air? So if the administrator or any one of the commissioners could direct me as to where to find this $300,000 gain that is projected to be realized with this road sharing agreement with Calhoun County, I would greatly appreciate it. I take it it's nowhere in the budget.
Any other public comment on the Jackson County budget for 2014?
Good evening. Chuck Todd asked me to own 98. Been through the county for 18 years. I do court ordered investigations along with pre and post divorce conciliations for the FOC. I'm here with several Jackson County employees, workers, union, non-union, along with several other retirees behind me. Back in 2005, current administrator Bob Elliott instructed the union members, workers, that we needed to start cutting personnel, making general cuts to the budget, as apparently he could see doom and gloom, as I quote him, in the future. I do not have statistics for non-union, county general, or the few other smaller units, but according to record for the bigger units, namely units B, C, and D, we reduced staff from 232 union members, workers, in approximately 2006 to exactly 185 union workers, members in 2013, mostly from attrition in those seven years, which is a difference of 47 employees along with health care and fringe benefits. This does not include the reductions in county general or the other smaller units. In 2006, we were told by administrator that followed Mr. Elliott, namely Randy Treacher, that staff reductions will generate money savings along, although will require larger workloads, could benefit staff within future contracts that are left standing with higher workloads in terms of incentives, as I quote him. That never happened with the members, workers, that is. However, it appeared to happen with various department heads and upper management. Example one, the merging of the clerk's office with the register of deeds has received a significant increase in salary each year for that, which is currently the department head of the clerk's office. Example two, the current deputy administrator, Adam Brown's $5,000 bonus at Christmas time for no stated valid reason in December 2011. It was in M-Life. Example three, Adam Brown's apparent new policy slash incentive in 2011 for upper management to receive five extra vacation PTO days, all for HR and upper management personnel, with Mr. Brown's reasoning to that is to, and I quote, "attract better applicants," unquote, which was during the time when Ms. Dixon was hired as the Director of Human Resources. So during the time, the members have heard and forcefully accepted this over the years, simultaneously, the members have constantly given up concessions during negotiations, contract after contract, such as 0% raises for many consecutive years, with some years that were 1% and 2% increases, which were quickly eaten up and surpassed by incredibly large health care increases alone and did not even touch the issue of any part of cost of living that has skyrocketed just in the past three years. Essentially, all that is said, the 0% and the 1% and 2% raises over the past six years, along with the large health care and cost of living increases, have put employees in a reduced income every year that goes by. Some members have also asked management for a job study, which has not occurred since 1998, basically a study to align wages with job duties, only to be told, and I quote, "Go ahead. There will be no increases, whatever the outcome is," unquote. In addition to upper management asking members slash workers to take concessions, we constantly hear about what we, as members, feel is unnecessary spending, such as the following. Adam Brown stated during one meeting that he had a, and apparently is referred to as a hotspot at his residence, which apparently is some kind of antenna surged, used as a way to get high-speed internet at his personal residence, and then admitted that it was paid for by the county. Why is this necessary during these budget issues? We members have been asked for suggestions to make cuts before, in 2004, to be exact, when apparently the budget issue began emerging. We were asked by the current administrator at that time, Chet Taraskevich, as to what our ideas were to reduce expenses. One member quickly asked, I quote, "Why do all the members, why, excuse me, why do all the managers need cell phones, all paid for by the county?" Unquote. And at that time, we're flip phones and just dialed numbers and maybe texted. We were told at this meeting of reducing expenses that, I quote, Chet Taraskevich, "It's just a drop in the bucket." Several other ideas were suggested by the members to cut, and if any of the suggestions to cuts affected the administration or management in any way, the answer was received, quote again, "It's just a drop in the bucket." Now, several years later, and cellphone bills later, I might add, in 2013, the flip phones have since been replaced with nice expensive iPhones, smartphones with some of the upper management, even having iPads along with other expensive electronic devices, all paid for on the taxpayer's dime. Our viewpoint to cell phones and iPads and other unnecessary electronic devices is that management does not need them essentially for 9 to 5 operations. We have two administrators for some unknown reason. The members were told in approximately 2006 that a new administrator would be hired. This task would be done for a searching fee paid for by the county. This new administrator would be hired to basically shadow current administrator Randy Treacher as Randy, as Mr. Treacher entered the drop program, also known as the Deferred Retirement Act program. Three years went by, and Mr. Treacher ended his drop program, but was contracted by the county to continue employment as administrator overseeing Adam Brown. Mr. Treacher then left Jackson County in 2011, and Adam Brown, which shadowed Mr. Treacher since he was hired, was passed for the position for some unknown reason, and Mr. Overton was hired, which I may add was searched for by the search company and again paid for out of the county budget. Now, two years later, we continue to have two administrators and to basically be advised by Mr. Overton that the county is in need of two administrators. Mr. Overton's exact reason, and I quote again, "One person cannot do this job." Yet we have the Human Resources Director that runs two entities, namely the county and the city. In closing, I think on behalf of the entire membership, workers, retirees as a whole, why should the current employees or the retirees continue to take concessions again and again and again to continue to appease management with the ongoing budget issues, when only to continue to view the unnecessary spending with upper management and the administration? We think it's administrations and management's turn to take the concessions at this point in time.
As you can see, there's quite a bit of frustration that's represented by the president and whom the employees that he represent. My name is Jerry Colly. I'm staff representative for the unit 2098. I represent these members. I am, the staff rep from ASME, the American Federation of State and County Ministerial Employees. I just want to say, I understand under your consideration, under the 24 budget, there is some idea or maybe some thought of reducing some of the health care benefits that the retirees currently have. That is, in addition to all the other things that you heard, is a very big concern. As you see, we have a lot of retirees here in the background, and we would hope that you would give some consideration to your thought of modifying those bargained for benefits that they currently have. And we'd like to know what gives you the authority and the moral right to do that, and if you could explain it to us, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm Sandy Crowley, former county clerk and presently retired, and I'm here to express my concern regarding the alignment of pre-65 retiree health. The proposed alternative rate three, which I understand is to be voted up on tonight as part of your 2014 budget. I was surprised to receive a phone call from a retiree who brought this to my attention, and I would have thought that some type of correspondence would have been sent out from the county to all the retirees regarding this proposal, especially those that were going to be affected by this. I signed up for the drop on June 30, 2004. It was not an easy decision for me, because I'd been working for the county for 30 years at that time, but I felt that I needed to look out for my best interest with respect to my retirement benefits. The language in the drop contract I signed is very specific and states, and I would like to read that. "I understand that my election to participate in the drop is final and irrevocable, and that there will be no further opportunity to change my drop election, status of employee contributions, or pension option and survivor election. I understand that I will not be impacted by any future modifications which may enhance or reduce retirement benefits. I further understand that my employment with Jackson County will terminate no later than June 30, 2007. And you know, there was no question in my mind then as to my future retirement benefits until now.
My name is Luanne Allen. I'm a retiree of Jackson County. I was employed here for 34 years. I retired under the exact same premise that Sandy Crowley did, under the same paperwork. It was a very difficult decision, but I had to do it to protect my benefits. And now, you want to change all of that. Are you going to let me come back to work? I'd still be working. What are my options now?
My name is Margaret Tucker, and I worked 34 years also, and I never would have retired if I had known that you were going to knock my benefits in medical. I have a condition that happened when I was working here, but I still keep plugging along. It didn't affect anything. I always abide by all of your rules. Please have courtesy enough for the rest of us. Everybody knows that when you get older, I'm only 63. I would have stayed till I was 65. Come hell or high water, I would have stayed, and I have that much dedication towards my job. But imagine if they did this to you. How would you feel? I don't have the money to pay for any more medical. My prescription coverage doesn't cover all what I have now. It's very, very expensive to grow old. You better think about it, because you're all heading there.
My name is Sherry Eva, and I am a retired county employee after 31 years with the county, and my feelings are the same as the people who spoke ahead of me. It's hard to be on the bargaining committee and sit across from department heads and elected officials and sit there and be told that you're bargaining in good faith and that you, what you do is important to the county, but that now you're looking at benefits that are taken away. For years, we had benefits taken away. We did signing bonuses. You know, we were told there was no money, the county was in a hardship, and we always tried to work. And I have to say, bargaining with the commissioners from days gone by of Tom Ratchford and Max Vito and some of the old timers, they may not have agreed with the union, but they worked with us. And I don't feel this is what's happening in today's society here in the County of Jackson, and I am very discouraged by this. And to think that there is quoted, I believe it was Crystal Dixon at the last commission meeting, stated that some people were protected by this under a legacy? What is that? What does that mean? Who are those 12 people that are protected? We all should be protected. We bargained in good faith, and we worked very hard for the county. 31 years I put in, and I still come back and work casual when you need somebody to cover a clinic.
I started at the county 14 years ago and the front of the court, which is not an easy job. As a caseworker, I am now a juvenile probation officer for the county for the last 12 years. It is my understanding that 12, excuse me, the 2014 budget for my department, family, court states 17 furlough days. When I approached my department head, they told me that they had no idea that there was 17 furlough days on our budget, which I find very hard to believe. And in asking my colleagues, they knew nothing about it. We were told 10 furlough days. When I reapproached the department head after the last county commissioner meeting, I was told once again that the commissioners wouldn't give us any more than 10 furlough days. I only see myself here from my department. It's very discouraging, and after having a family member work for the county for 37 years and retiring and tell me what a great place this is to work, I really have my doubts. And after listening to my former colleagues from front of the court, it's very discouraging to hear that my future is not as secure as I had once believed.
Any more comment on the 2014 budget? Any more comment on the 2014 budget? Seeing none, we move on to the Brownfield Plan 221 Mill Street, Brooklyn, Michigan. Anyone here to comment on that? Do you want to answer any questions or explain anything to the Board of Commissioners, please, Amy?
I didn't know if you wanted a summary or not. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Go ahead. Give a summary.
Okay. The Brownfield Plan was originally adopted for 221 Mill Street in Brooklyn in 2008, and it was encompassed a development of next-gen energy which never came to fruition. However, during the time that that project was moving forward, the Village of Brooklyn expended funds through a Department of Environmental Quality loan to remove contaminated wood block flooring, lead paint, and that work was completed. And so now, because we have a Brownfield Plan on the property, we have come to agreement with the Village of Brooklyn through a reimbursement agreement to repay them with tax increment that's collected. The base value for the two parcels is $95,529. That base value was established in 2008, and any tax increment that accrues above that base value will begin to be collected in 2013, and that will be returned to the village after the administrative costs are paid to the Jackson County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for up to 30 years to repay that loan for the work that they did. If the base value ever drops, or if the value, taxable value of the property ever drops below that base value, then there would be no tax increment. The Village of Brooklyn, through their reimbursement agreement, is aware that they will only receive that money to pay off that loan if there is tax increment available. There are some developers interested in the property, and the only other changes in the amended plan are to allow for interest to be paid, that they will be paying MDEQ financing costs on that loan, and also preparation of a baseline environmental assessment for future developers, so it would cover that cost, and that's kind of to encourage future development of the site. Any questions?
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this? Okay, at this time, we will close the public hearings and special orders. We will move on to item six, general public comment. Public comment guidelines for each individual will state their name. They will have five minutes time limit at this time. When an individual addresses the board under public comment at the opening of the meeting, then you have an opportunity to address the board again at the end of the meeting under public comment at the end of the meeting. There'll be no responses from the Board of Commissioners. If you have general questions, we will collect them, and hopefully, if you'll speak to Deputy Administrator Brown, he'll either collect an email or a way to communicate an answer to you. If you'd like to step forward, please state your name, and we'll start public comment.
Good evening. My name is Del Anto. I live on Jefferson Road in Flack Lake. I'm here to address the board on an issue involving Jefferson Road, the maintenance of it. This road has been in awful shape for several years now. Approximately four years ago, I had over $13,000 worth of damage inside my house because of the traffic going up and down Jefferson Road. You could sit in my living room as a, and the traffic goes by and feel vibrations. Now, I have an old farmhouse. I have completely redone, and like I said, three or four years ago, I had, it was actually over $13,000 worth of damage. Now, I have an estimate here of $6,972 for some oil repair work caused by the vibrations of these oil well trucks and heavy trucks going up and down Jefferson Road. We got double bottom gravel haulers. We've got steel haulers with eight axle trailers going up and down Jefferson Road. We've got the oil field tankers, and they are doing nothing but tearing that road up. I was involved in the trucking company for 35 years. I know what those trucks do, and I know what kind of roads it takes to operate these trucks on. We've had numerous near misses of cars coming off in haze, making a left turn going west on Jefferson, and these tankers coming up there and having one hell of a time stopping. There's been, just in the last two weeks, there's been at least three or four near The county's not maintaining that road. I've been told by road commission engineers for the last five years that the base of that road is gone. It needs to be tore up and completely redone. Now, I have a copy here of the proposal to redo the road, and they're calling for widening, de-boring of the road on both sides. I'm, I'm, my prop, my house is right within the 26 feet of the area now of the roadside. Are they going to take my house? There's, there's lots of property there that, that falls in that same situation. They just, they just allowed, the last year or the year before, they allowed the Spirit Trail to put, to be put in there, a cement walkway. Are they going to tear that up and make that part of, part of the roadway now? That's, that's less than four feet off the road. This plan, I mean, good golly, this, this, they got to take into consideration that that road was built how many hundreds of years ago? And my house is, I think my house was built in 1833. So, you know, the county's got to step up and do something on that road. Safety factors are involved. Safety factors are involved, not counting, and I'm not the only one that's got property damage.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Anto.
Well, I'm just here to say that I will be filing a lawsuit tomorrow for the damages, because this has been going on and on and on and on.
I'm Lori Pelham, Administrative and Compliance Manager at the Jackson County Resource Recovery Facility. I have been with the facility since it opened in 1987. Four and a half cents per pound. Four and a half cents will save 33 employees and their families. It will save 40 local haulers. Four and a half cents to ensure that we are there for county, state, and federal agencies who use our facility for destruction of records and confiscated materials. Four and a half cents for our county residents who disposed of material 40,000 times in 2012. Four and a half cents would continue to ensure flow control and a hazard-free place for haulers to dump, saving thousands on vehicle repairs over landfills. Four and a half cents to ensure money is available for ongoing landfill permits, groundwater and leachate testing and reporting, approximately $250,000 per year, and solid waste management costs. I manage the scale house at the Resource Recovery Facility, and the opinions of residential customers and haulers has been overwhelmingly in support of keeping this facility operating. They believe in renewable energy, in reducing the amount of waste to be landfilled, inexpensive rates, and a safe and hazard-free environment to dump materials. I can only hope that our commissioners have received many phone calls over the last couple of weeks. Four and a half cents would give the county time, time to continue to run the Resource Recovery Facility, to be able to support the prison if it becomes necessary, to get legal opinions, to investigate a new solid waste plan, to explore recycling, to work on decommissioning plans and costs should they become necessary, and to continue to work on a possible agreement with the state without time constraints. In other words, it just makes sense. Veolia Water, as an employee and representative of them, I want to assure the county that we will do everything in our power to help you to keep this facility operating for Jackson County and for its employees. Thank you.
I wanted to speak a little bit about the Jackson County Resource Recovery Facility, too. The Jackson County Resource Recovery Facility has been spewing dioxins into the Grand River from the quench tank, and you've been doing that for 25 years, and you haven't tested since 1992 for dioxins and furons. In the meantime, cancer in our community has gone from 1,644 new cases in 1987 to 2,839 cases after 20 years of your operation. I want to tell you a little story about the dioxin molecule. It's created when carbon and plastic are combusted together, which happens out there when paper, wood products, and plastic bags are burnt. It's created in the stream, it settles into the ash, it goes over the overflow into the Blackman Township sewer system. It then is transported to the Jackson City wastewater treatment plant, which does not test or treat for dioxins. It's then disposed of by dumping it into the Grand River. About two miles downstream, there's an irrigation pump. There's a farmer who's watering his corn with river water from the Grand River. That dioxin molecule goes into the soil, it's taken up by a rizome, it goes up into the kernel of the corn. When that corn is harvested, that dioxin molecule is ground up into flour and served to you as a tortilla or nacho, or else it's turned into feed corn and it's given to the animals that you eat when you go out to eat and have a steak dinner. That's how the dioxin molecule travels. It is a priority pollutant and a known human carcinogen. I also wanted to talk about alternatives. I spent the day on the phone for a good part with Jill Haygood. She's the Outagami County Recycling Administrator up in Wisconsin. They run a tri-county facility, and the Outagami population is 177,000 people. Our population is 160,000, but they've joined with two other counties, and they service 500,000 people. Two of the counties issued bonds to pay for this facility. One county, must have been well managed, paid cash. The facility cost, they had an existing facility, but they added a $1.2 million expansion. The equipment cost for single-stream recycling facility was $7.9 million in new equipment from bulk handling systems. The type of equipment included metering bins, screens, conveyors, magnets, eddy curl, optical sorter, glass shaker, saddles for storage, and balers. The facility has been self-supporting since it opened. It's been making money. Jobs, the facility is county-owned and run with five full-time county employees, that's full pensions or that. And then the county subcontracts out 21 jobs, including sorters, supervisors, and forklift operators. They do not use prison labor. Labor costs in 2012 for the county were $410,000. The subcontractors cost were $1,000,128,000. Of the waste stream, they recycle 95% to 96%. The total volume of recycled materials in 2009 to 2011 was 53,000 tons. In 2012, 65,000 tons. They're growing. You can see that. The expected amount of tonnage for 2013, 75,000 tons. The revenue they're generating, this is the most interesting thing that the commissioners should pay attention to. In 2012, figures of percentage for 65,000 tons processed with total revenues of $6,904,000. 14% of that was from cardboard, $900,000. 11% from mixed paper, $544,000. 34% from newspaper, $1.8 million. 3% from steel, $500,000.
Thirty seconds, mister.
All right, I won't go through all these categories. The prices fluctuate month to month. The general trend is upward. They haven't had any new businesses relocate there, but pre-established businesses are buying their products. They use private refuse haulers. Their tipping fees are $33 per ton. They have residents precincting to single stream and oil recycling. They kind of have a flow control ordinance. Give this a look, call this woman.
I don't know if I can follow all of that. Good evening to each one of y'all. My name is Kenny Price, and even though I'm a legal immigrant up here amongst all you people, I still have a love for Jackson County and the people of Jackson County, be they rich or poor. And so I would solicit your vote tonight for the Board of the DHS MCF position, and I thank you for your time.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is William Ross. I live out of Wolf Lake. I believe that you people as a board need to put out some clear information as opposed to what's been out in the local newspaper. And I don't know where all they got all that stuff, because most of the people in Jackson County believe that the incinerator is doomed and closing. And I've been told by Mr. Duckham that it has not been formally sealed in cement. I remember when all this incinerator jazz came up, and I thought then it was a white elephant. But it is what it is. And I remember the state touting it as the way of the future, and it probably is. This was an early design. It's an early model. It has its flaws, just like everything else. It costs money to operate. Inflation is a factor. Upgrading is a factor. There's a lot of factors that drive up the cost of everything. I remember when gasoline was 25 cents a gallon, too. We'll never see that again, and we're never going to see $14 a yard tipping fees for a ton. The incinerator is there. There's a weasel in the system someplace, and I understand that consumers' power is trying to undercut the incinerator, and the state's backed out of the deal. Consumers' power is none of our friends. Consumers' power is looking out for consumers' power. They do not like competition. They will give the state a sweetheart deal, and once the incinerator is turned over to the state, watch what happens to that rate. Hang on, because there will be no kisses, not even a handshake. The Jackson Citizen Patriot has long been a biased institution, and they can't go out and find news, they'll make some up. And if they take all their facts from the man that runs the incinerator instead of the county commission, oh my gosh, the incinerator's closed in the end of September. That's it. If the incinerator does close, which I think is a tremendously bad idea, because we got to have someplace to put the garbage, and there better be a plan in place before anything happens to that incinerator, for the people of Jackson to have someplace to put their garbage. It's as simple as that. Anything less would be a grievous disservice to the people of Jackson County. And for lack of a better idea, I got one real simple suggestion. We take all the garbage and send it over to that guy's house that spoke two speakers ago, if he thinks it's that damn simple.
I'm Glenn Remington. I currently live in the county. I've spent most of my life living in the county. I grew up on a small farm out in the heart of Waterloo, surrounded by the great swamp, bounded by Reithmiller Road, Waterloo-Munis Road, and Mackel Road. And when I was about 10 years old, we saved up our bags of garbage and kept them in a barrel in the barn, and once a month or so, we took them to the Waterloo Township Dump. And there was a sand trench that they dug every periodically as it grew, one next to the other one, which is right next to a large swamp. There was no liner, there was no regulation, there was no nothing. Not long after that, we got the EPA by a president that wasn't popular, but he did give us the EPA. Not long after that, we had things like the Clean Air Act, Clean Water Act, our CRA, Circlaw. We had regulations that managed stack commissions out of the stack and water discharges into the water to the sewer or open ground or whatever, what you have you. We had a little discussion about what these landfills were named over there. By the time I was about 10 or 12, we were bringing our waste to the local dump out here off of Trumbull Road, which I got confused between the city dump, the corrections dump, then it became the county dump, and then eventually, as it outgrew all that, it became the McGill Road Dump. Far as I'm concerned, from a satellite map, it's the same plot of ground, it just happens to have a road between it. There is a lake on that site, and it's surrounded by wetlands. As far as I'm concerned, every single environmental regulation that's appropriate should be met or exceeded from that plant. I would support the former gentleman's concerns be looked into and addressed as appropriate. I would also suggest that as long as Michigan wants to be the dumping ground for Canada, there's going to be a huge demand for 500-acre dumps spread all over Michigan as close as possible to the bridge to get to Canada, and I would encourage us to take a look at the ones that you can see from miles away in Macomb County and other places. As far as I'm concerned, that plant has always been and always will be to this day about protecting groundwater and surface water. We've got five or six major rivers that all start out either tributaries or sources from Jackson County and flow out in all directions. The Raisin River, Hudson, excuse me, the Huron River, the Raisin River, Kalamazoo River, the St. Joseph River, and the Grand River all start out here and flow other places. And we've got a responsibility to protect those waters. If nothing else, that plant gives us a chance to minimize the landfill volume that needs to go in the ground. I'm not in favor of trucking at distances away. That's just going to drive up costs for truck maintenance and fuel. I'm also all for recycling, and quite frankly, we've got a pretty darn good recycling program around this community one way or another. Most of the places I visit to dump things are usually pretty damn full by the end of Sunday, and you can't even get into the bins until they're emptied on Monday and then come back on Tuesday or Wednesday. But if we want to have a comprehensive regional waste management plan, the simplest way to encourage recycling is to raise the tipping fees. Let's reduce the waste stream that goes in the incinerator by driving the free market toward recycling more, absolutely. But as far as I'm concerned, if we close that plant, it'll be a tragedy to the Jackson County region and our, as far as I'm concerned, each and every one of us that live here have a responsibility to the entire regions all surrounding us where all these rivers flow. We've got to protect this water right here where it starts, and I would thank you very much for your time.
My name is Lauren Greenwich, and I, too, have filed to be appointed to the Department of Human Services Board for Jackson County. I live at 190 West Arbor View in Spring Arbor, Michigan. Zip code now seems to be transparency for government, and if you look at the facts I'm going to bring you, it's pretty transparent that it's what you know, I mean, who you know and not what you know, if you're going to be appointed or you're going to be recommended. I think the voters who elect you should be entitled to have people appointed based upon their qualifications, including the prior demonstrated interest. I think, I know that the commission usually approves the committee recommendations, but the differences are so great, I hope you'll take a fresh look at this. I'm aware that both the social services part and the medical care part of the board exist. I'm going to talk primarily about the medical care, because that's where the big impact is. The social services part's usually dictated by the state. Briefly, my qualifications are as follows. Six years with the FIA, now DHS Board. I was on it while we were building the facility. Two years as a chair. I'm familiar with members of the facility, the administrators, employees, the residents, and on a first-name basis. I was a guardian of a former resident there. I had the unfortunate experience of trying to qualify him for Medicaid, which was not a good experience. Seven years on Region 2 Arian Agency Board. Fifteen years, 15 years volunteer at the facility. I have nothing against Mr. Price, but I would certainly be surprised if his meeting of June 25th was not his first time at the facility. I receive and read the medical care minutes for the past two, three years. That's how I became aware that there was a vacancy. It was me. I took my responsibility. I was not asked by the Chair of the Commission to go to a meeting, and I think the minutes And I think the minutes say KP, they wouldn't even refer to him by name, quote, "KP." Mr. P. was invited by Mr. Shotwell to see what the DHS JCMCF Board meeting entailed. I know what it's entail. I was at those meetings for over six years. After the social services meeting, part of the meeting, he stated there seemed to be some very complicated... Mr. Williams, the head of the DHS Board, assured him that he would be able to pick it up easily. Done deal? Sounds like it. The proposed minutes of the same meeting, I quote, "Mr. Williams asked KP if he had any observations of the meeting. KP answered, 'He was amazed at you Yankees,'" close quote. Yeah, he's here. I've been in this county for over 15 years, closer to 20. I continued to ask the Board who this KP was, and I have always been denied that information by the Board. I discussed my commission, my appointment, possible appointment with the Commissioner. I was advised Mr. Price was well-known to Commission members and does a lot for the county. His application only states, capital G, R-E-A-T, and Jackson Conservation. This is my application. This shows what I did. This shows my interest in that. I wasn't asked by some members to join...
Thirty seconds, sir.
Okay. I want to wind it up. I have an agenda. It's not a hidden agenda, number one. We need to look at the census. There's only 180s. And when I was on the Board, it never went under 190. Everyone is $6,000. I want to review the Eden Commitment. I think that's a waste of money.
Time's up, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
My name is Mike Butchart, and I reside in Summit Township. And I'd like to discuss just a little bit on the Resource Recovery Facility, as I believe there's a lot of innuendo going around about what is going to happen. I'm not sure that there is any, there are any facts that are known yet on what will happen with that. I would like to suggest that possibly some committee be formed to see what can be done with that. Specifically, if we can't sell the steam, convert it to electricity and find some way to get rid of it at the best price for the county, for the city, and for the facility. The bottom line being that I would like to see something done here to keep that facility open. And if we find that the state can buy their electricity cheaper, we have to find out what the price is and get our price down there. But do it and get it done and keep it open, because that is the best way to get rid of our garbage, our, whatever you want to call our rubbish, whatever you want to call it. But it is the easiest and the best way to do it, and I promise somebody I will be less than four minutes.
Thank you again, John Wilson, Jackson County resident. With mixed signals being sent out regarding the incinerator, at least the general public now knows that a lease agreement with the state will allow the state to take over full control of the incinerator after the county relinquishes control of it, if and when it happens. What the state does with the incinerator, who knows? Unless that is, the state does know what their plans are with it, and we're just not being told. Last month, the Commissioners voted to go into closed session to discuss, well, we're not sure what was discussed, because the Commissioners took no action. The public doesn't even know the exact reason why the Commission went into closed session. Flow control does not fit the criteria of going into closed session. Excuse my cynicism, or maybe being too much of a skeptic and believing there may possibly be something sinister involved with the MDOC and its decision to save money by not purchasing power generated currently from the incinerator. While we're being told the MDOC needs to save money by not purchasing steam, the MDOC is allowing Wayne County the use of a state prison to house their county jail inmates. So, while the MDOC is saving money from Jackson County from the incinerator, they're giving away the savings plus some to Wayne County. Also, after being publicly told through the years by Commissioners who currently serve and by a former county administrator who is currently serving as a deputy director with the MDOC, that tipping fees would be reduced by half after the incinerator bonds were paid off, which would then reflect in the large savings for the county citizens. It looks now as though those savings by the citizens will not come to fruition. With the exception of the ad hoc committee that is discussing the incinerator, county citizens have not been served well by being kept in the dark with the possible closure of the incinerator. How can we be reassured that everything is being done to keep the incinerator under county control when one Commissioner, this morning during a radio interview, said he hasn't even read the incinerator lease agreement between the county and state and wasn't even sure what the lease agreement entails? I remain hopeful the rest of the Commission has at least read the lease agreement before making any informed decisions on the incinerator. Regardless of what the lease agreement states, the incinerator, open or closed, belongs to the citizens of Jackson. If Randy Treacher believes the state can save money by not buying steam from the incinerator to power the prisons, then it's the county commission's fiduciary duty to do everything in their power to either continue using it or sell it, whether it be to the state or consumers' energy, or let it rot on prison property. Just don't hand over the keys to Randy Treacher. You should all know by now his financial motives are not in the best interest of Jackson County. Thank you.
My name is Chris Hart. I'm a resident of the city of Jackson and also an employee of the Jackson County Resource Recovery Facility. I'd like to just kind of reiterate and support the statements made by the gentleman in the Harley-Davidson T-shirt, who said that there is quite a bit of misinformation out there about the plant. And I think at some point, public opinion is really going to make a difference in the future of the facility. And I think it would be in the best interest of all of us if the facts about the facility were made prevalent to the residents of Jackson County. I'm under the impression that all of you, with the exception of a few, are in favor of keeping the facility open, and I think that's commendable. But I would say it needs to be a priority, at least to put the truth out there about everything. There's a lot of inflated numbers and skewed statistics and whatnot that kind of... A good example of that is the gentleman that spoke before about diacorns. I think it's important that the people know about the, you know, the emissions control systems at the facility, the closed system for the water runoff and whatnot, and the tipping bays and throughout the facility, the fact that that is not in fact being shipped back, straight back to the wastewater treatment plant and whatnot. Other than that, I think you guys just need to take a really hard line on this and do whatever is necessary. And, you know, on behalf of me and the four people in my family that I'm supporting, I appreciate that you are doing like you can.
My name is Nigel. I'm a resident of Summit Township, and I also have a story. I remember back in 93, 94, I had an interesting experience myself. I lived right in between the incinerator and a dump. I remember being woken up in the middle of the night by a police officer because a underground fire by the dump caused toxins to go in the air, put my brother in a hospital. And on that note, I remember growing up, always having to buy bottled water, which has carcinogens in it, because the dump polluted our well water. So, growing up, my bad memories, the memories I have of pollutant and carcinogens didn't come from Jackson County Resource Recovery Facility. It came from dumps where you want to start shipping the trash. So, on that note, if people are worried about carcinogens, you can also start worrying about all your diet sodas. You can start worrying about all the cigarettes. We have a lot more carcinogens than I'm sure that the Jackson County Resource Recovery Facility has to offer.
I am the young man that was put in the hospital. That was my big brother that spoke to you. I don't, I'm not quite the public speaker, and I'm not an expert on any facts necessarily. What I do know is that you guys were elected to take care of the citizens of Jackson. And the citizens of Jackson are going to be put out of jobs. There are dozens of people who own their own hauling companies for the, you know, just to take care of the families after they lost their jobs during the big crash. We have lost enough here in Jackson. Let's start looking out for each other.
Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. We have no special meetings, no standing committees. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June 18th County Commission Meeting of 2013. Have a motion in support. Any additions, changes, or corrections? Commissioner Duckham?
Mr. Chair, I would like to correct my vote for the Second Parks Seat voted on last month, specifically the second round vote. As this seat was intended for a public appointment and a public member was applying, I wish to reflect my support for Mike Rand Jr.
Any other corrections? Commissioner Elwell?
Same correction, Mr. Chair.
Let my vote reflect the same also, please. Is there any comment to this? Commissioner Mahoney?
For those of you in the public that don't understand what they're, what they've just done, they appointed me to the Parks Board, and they just took that seat away from me. I've served on the Parks Board for the past four years as a Region Two representative. And once the county received its designation to start its own planning commission, then that seat that I was holding was no longer valid. So, what has happened is a person who has sat here for 19 years on this county board, every single time I went for a seat to try and represent my constituents inside the city of Jackson, I was told to just wait. There's a plan. And what that plan turned out to be is now people are going to go backwards and take their votes away, and so that I no longer will be able to serve. I want you to know that this is preferential treatment that they are doing to me, and I want to serve notice to this Board, that I will be seeking representation and going to EEOC, because I believe that this is based on the fact that I am a minority, a minority with disabilities, and they have used my health as a reason why they don't want me to serve. So, with their checking their votes, I just wanted all of you to understand, I've been a good Commissioner over the past 19 years, and I intend to sue this Board for what the action is that they just took. Thank you very much.
That's discriminatory. I'm telling you right now.
Any other, ma'am, could you please sit down, please? Please sit down, ma'am, you're out of order. Thank you. Any other corrections or additions? All in favor of the minutes as corrected? Please, aye? Those opposed? Please let the minutes reflect. It now arrived at the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda? Any corrections or deletions or removal from the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing none. Madam Kirk, could you please post the vote?
Commissioner Luchka? Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Yes.
Commissioner Plachek?
Yes.
Commissioner Elwell?
Yes.
Chairman Shotwell?
Yes. Consent agenda is passed. This time, we've arrived at standing committee reports, affairs, and agencies. Chair by Commissioner David Elwell. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. First up, our appointments. There's a number of appointments to the Emergency Management Advisory Council. The first appointment recommendation is Sheriff Steve Rand.
Thank you, Commissioner Mahoney. Let it be noted that we will be appointing, and Commissioner Elwell will read them off now.
The Sheriff Steve Rand, Lieutenant Chris Simpson, Dave Woden, Kathy Fitzgerald, John Johnston, Mike Curry, Dick Borton, Jill Blair, and Commissioner John Plachek.
There are two public seats at this time that are vacant. We'll continue to post and receive applicants for next month. All in favor with the current slate?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Preservation Board, two open seats, no applicants yet. That will carry over as well. Third is the retirement system. The recommendation is James E. Shotwell Jr.
This is a chair appointment, and I'm effectively putting myself, continuing my service on the retirement Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Let the minutes reflect.
Lastly, Mr. Chair, it's the Department of Human Services Board. Committee recommendation is Kenny Price.
Any nominations from the floor? Standing Committee, Human Services, Julie Alexander, Chair, Commissioner Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Human Services has no business to bring forth.
Thank you, Commissioner Alexander. Standing Committee Personnel and Finance chaired by Vice Chairman Phil Duckham. Commissioner Duckham?
No commission, no, no board.
Mr. Elwell again. No business to conduct tonight, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Duckham. We've now arrived at unfinished business. Item A, the 2014 budget adoption. Entertain a motion, please? We have a motion? We have support? Commissioners' comments? Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick comment that I appreciate the extensive work that went into the budget and the long meeting we had last time hashing the budget out. I didn't like a couple of the things in the budget, many of the retirees here were talking about those, and I appreciate being afforded the opportunity to vote what I felt on those individual items, which was no on one particular one or two particular ones, but I will be voting for the budget as a complete package, knowing I was able to vote no at the time on those. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would reiterate Commissioner Elwell's comments, I felt the same way, but the budget as a whole, I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rice. Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Mahoney?
I might also like... And he's out.
Nobody's been notified of anything.
I notified a lot of them to come to the...
Ma'am, you're out of order. I thank you. Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none, the vote should be in front of you. Mr. Luchka? Has it come up yet? The 2014 budget is passed unanimously. Any other unfinished business to be brought before the board? Seeing and hearing none, we've arrived at new business. Any new business to come before the board? Seeing, hearing none, we've arrived at public comment the second time. You have three minutes, please step forward and address the board.
I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but I am a retiree also. Worked 20 years for the Health Department. It was a very good job, and like so many others have said, it was a very hard decision...
Your name, ma'am, please.
Pardon me?
Your name, please.
Lisa Hines.
Thank you.
Sorry. It was a very hard decision for me, but the drop was too good to pass up. I believed in what it said, and I feel some betrayal, because I did go ahead and sign that. I felt it was in my best financial interest for myself and my family, and I can't remember who said it, but I was wondering if any of you could answer, are we going to be allowed to come back to work then, to subsidize what we're going to be losing? Can anyone answer that question? Are we going to be allowed to come back? Because what we signed was not truthful. So, if there's monies being taken away, are we going to allow to be able to come back to work for the colony? Anyone?
No, I'm sorry, we don't answer. We don't give answers during public comment.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
My name is Vicki Bradley. I'm a retiree of Jackson County. My question to all of you is, at what point are you going to let us know what has happened here tonight? If it wasn't for fellow retirees, we would not even know that this was discussed. I think with all our years of service amongst you, we deserve at least an answer, and a straightforward one at that, and I hope our new administrator or assistant administrator will pass that information back to us at some point, so we know what's changed. Thank you very much.
Never done this, but my name's Howard Ray. I've lived in Grass Lake most of my life, but you remember, if you ever closed the incinerator and you stopped the flow control, you might as well look at Emmons, Northwest, Modern, the big companies will come in and outbid everybody, they own their own landfill. That's how many more jobs are going to be dropped. Just, and the landfill we got, we dumped it, our ashes that you made a deal with, or whoever, they'll start bringing their stuff from Canada and fill it up and leave. Thank you.
I'm a lifelong Jackson City and Jackson County resident. I can see that you people or your predecessor promised all these people certain things. Take a look at their faces. They're just not numbers, they're just not statistics, they're just not names on one of your list here. They're people who made a decision, made a decision based on what you guys told them, and they based the rest of their life on that decision, what you people offered to them. And now you have the nerve to back out. But I can see why this happens, because Mr. Duckham and Mr. Elway have proven in this meeting, from an outsider, that the good old boy network is alive and well in Jackson County. And that is disgusting. Thank you. Ms. Mahoney, I don't know you personally, but I've known of your work, and I think you've done an admirable job.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Second round of public comment is closed. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Mahoney?
I have further comment on what you, Mr. Chair, Duckham, and Elwell did. I just have never, ever thought that I'd get to 19 years of service and I'd be diminished to one board, because other people want something else or someone else. And like the gentleman said, the good old boy network is still alive and well. Well, I'm going to tell you, good old boys and girls, I will find an attorney that will sue you.
Go, Gail.
And I intend to do that. That is not a threat. You will receiving documentation and paperwork very soon, because this isn't the first time. And I have been keeping a tally. And I will bring it forward. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to elaborate just a little bit more on my decision to change my vote on the Parks Committee. It's worth mentioning that there was contact with the Parks Board Chairman, who's a former County Commission Chairman, whose heart is very much in that board also, and his email is pretty clear that he was looking for appointees from the Board of Commissioners to the Parks Board that can show up and participate in meetings and be a part of the solution. Those are his words, not mine. Before I came to my conclusion on what I was going to do, I looked back through the attendance records for the county appointees and found one particular one lacking in attendance when compared to the appointee that had the recommendation of the committee. That's important. There were conversations just this week or last week, there were the meeting missed immediately after those conversations about the importance of attendance at the Parks Committee meetings, and all of that matters. And I wanted to be clear on why I changed my vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let's see if other Commissioners would like to speak first, please. Commissioner Duckham?
I had anticipated an attendance of the Park Board Commissioners. I had anticipated after last week's conversation that we would have attendance at the Park Board, and I understand that Commissioner Mahoney may have had some computer problems, but I was given a promise that attendance would be there. And that, in light of the fact that it was supposed to be an appointment to a public member, rather than the Commissioners holding all the seats on the Park Board, the public is supposed to be represented also, and she was inadvertently placed in a seat that belonged to a public member. And that's really the reason I changed my vote. Thank you.
Commissioner Luchka?
Next month is the Jackson County Fair. Sunday night, we have the Van Perry. Tuesday, Monday night is the rock show with Godsmack. Tuesday is tractor pulls, there we go. Wednesday, I believe, is a rodeo. Friday is the monster trucks, Saturday is the Euro Derby, Euro Races and Demolition Derby. Also Saturday, at noon, I believe, is a pedal tractor pull. And the man that brings the pedal tractor pull in has a vehicle large enough for adults to sit in, so we need to see some of you people out there seeing if you can outpull your grandkids. There's livestock shows Sunday, every day of the fair except for Friday and Saturday.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Mahoney?
I changed my mind. Action will speak louder than words.
We have no closed session. Entertain a motion to adjourn? Motion, support? All in favor? Those opposed? Duly carried.